Good evening and welcome to our forum for Raytown School Board. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platt Counties, and the Raytown Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism. I am Anitra Steele and I am a member of the League and lead the forum's admin team. I would like to uh introduce you to the League members that will be helping with this forum. Cheryl Barnes is our moderator, Elizabeth Dar is our timer, and Donna Houck is our tech host. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We neither support nor oppose candidates or parties. Our mission is to empower voters to defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every citizen has the knowledge, the right, the desire, and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. The public has been sent in the questions you will be asked, and we specifically ask your school district to inform the students that they can also send in questions. So you may be getting questions from high school civic students, which I think would be particularly on point for the task you wish to be elected to. The public can watch this, or you can watch this after the fact because it's being recorded and will be available through the League's website, L W V K C dot org. I'm going to turn you over now to Cheryl Barnes, our moderator. Thank you.
Hello and welcome. We want to emphasize that your vote matters. Tonight, we'll learn about candidates for the Raytown School Board on your April 4 ballot. The Board of Education is a volunteer representative body elected by the registered voters of the local public school district. The board governs the school district and provides leadership and advocacy for public education. School boards make decisions in the best interest of the entire district. They serve a three-year term. Voters have submitted questions for candidates via the League's website, L W V K C dot org. Forums last approximately ninety minutes. I'll ask each candidate the same question selected from those submitted by the public. The order of candidate responses will be determined by random rotation. Each candidate will be given ninety seconds to respond to each question and two minutes for a closing statement. All of the candidates running for these offices have been invited, and they're all here this evening. We welcome the candidates running for the Raytown School Board and thank them for their participation in tonight's forum. We're going to start off with alphabetical order. And our first question is, what is your let me see, I just lost my place, I'm sorry. What qualifies you to serve on the school board, in particular, your financial acumen? And we will start with Sean Bryant.
Greetings, everybody, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening. My name is Sean Bryant, and what makes me qualified is just I've been building myself for the last decade, two decades, to do something just like this. I have over a decade experience teaching in a K-12 setting as a math teacher, math interventionist, math instructional coach, sponsored a math team. So I have a way with numbers, and I can take numbers that are seemingly irrelevant, and I can place them together to make a cohesive story. I was just looking at some of the attendance and discipline numbers. For instance, just one example, and a shout out to Southwood Elementary. Not only have they given zero out-of-school suspensions this year, they have one of the highest average daily percent attendances in the district. I'm also a Level Three certified leader in me coach, so I can help maximize the effectiveness of students and adults alike. And I can't wait to share more with you this evening. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Madeline?
Hi, I'm Madeline Douglas, and I'm coming to the Raytown School District with many years, in particular, working and advocating for children. I've worked for twenty-three years in the mental health and foster care system advocating for children as one of the former directors at Niles Home for Children. And there, I not only worked with the children, but I was a trainer or a specialist for behavior management and trauma-informed care. So I come, I think, highly qualified to work not only with the advocacy for children, but I know how to work with administration, I know how to work with staff, boards. I am an alumni member of the Greater Missouri Women in Leadership and working with women who have looked throughout the state of Missouri to see how we can advocate for different situations in the state of Missouri, children in particular. So I think I come highly qualified to work with the district to help improve some of the things that we'd like to see done in an already good school system, but to make it even better.
Thank you. Torrance? Are you on mute?
Yeah. Hello, so my current study of discipline at the moment is accounting, actually. I hold two bachelor's degrees, one in business management and the other in accounting. I have several years' experience specifically with accounting and tax and bookwork. And so I definitely am qualified to look at budgets and balance sheets. So I do feel that I would bring that to the table in my qualifications. Along with being specifically an outsider, I don't have an education background, so to say, it's more business. I've been in business for several years successfully. So that's what I bring to the table with this.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
Good evening. So the question was about qualifications to be on the board and also financial acumen to be on the board. So I've served eighteen years already, it's a long time, on the Raytown School Board. So I do think we need some new voices, we always need new voices. But at this time, we actually have three positions open in this election, but we also have one additional vacancy due to resignation. So it's possible that we could have four totally brand-new board members. That wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing, but I think it would be better to continue to have some experience, and I have quite a bit of experience serving on the board. And I also worked for the U.S. Department of Education for twenty-five years, working with federal student aid. So I know what the next level looks like as far as kids needing financial aid to go to school and what we need to do to prepare them. As far as financial acumen, I'd first like to say, I don't think it's necessarily a needed qualifier. As long as you're willing to work hard and learn and attend a lot of meetings. But having said that, I am financially aware. I've been the chairman of the Finance Committee. We have a hundred fifty million dollar budget in our district, a lot of different bond issues, past and present, one coming up. So it's very important to be on top of the finances and to know your way around those and to pay attention to the money as it's being spent.
Thank you. Noddy?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League for inviting me out this evening. I've worked with Jackson County Family Court for over twenty-plus years, and I've dealt with high-risk youth, and I've also been in and out of schools dealing with the youth. So I think that's what qualifies me and makes me more than aware than with dealing with these youth and the teachers. So I've been in and out of the schools and the homes. So I've seen what goes on inside the homes that helps qualify me to deal with the situations of these youth. Also, I'm trauma-informed and also have dealt with these kids that have been in these situations. And also dealt with teachers to help them get past these situations. I've done a lot of things to help kids get back into schools. I've created programs to help kids get back into schools and transform from getting back into schools to help them perform better, giving them different scholarships and different programs to help with these situations. I'm a business owner in the community, and I've been a part of Raytown, and I feel like that's what qualifies me to be more disqualified for this position.
Thank you. Thank you. Jules? Qualifications and financial acumen?
Can you hear me okay? So I'm going to start with financial acumen. My bachelor's is a Bachelor of Science in Finance and Economics, and I received that summa cum laude, which means with highest distinction, three-point-nine GPA. My master's is in Communication and Education, which I graduated with a four-point-oh. Both of those things alone would not qualify me. But I also was an Executive Vice President and Chief Financial Officer of a large corporation in California for many years. So I understand the ins and outs of, you know, how finances work and what's important to pay attention to in our budget. As well as I have seven years of higher education that I've worked in for a university. And so I see what the qualifications are that are needed for students, both in blue collar and in higher education. I have found that on top of that, that the ten-plus years of ministry work with troubled and homeless teenagers helps me to understand where our families are sometimes coming from. And I also am a mother of five and a grandma of thirteen adopted grandkids. So I think that all of those things and then some qualify me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael? You're on mute?
Hey, everyone. Thank you. Appreciate the League Women Voters for holding this forum. This has been an awesome experience getting to know these candidates and hearing their passion for what Raytown can be. I think what makes me uniquely qualified, being a father to two graduates for Raytown High School and a current student in the Raytown School District. I'm deeply invested into the community. I'm the Executive Director of the Raytown Emergency Assistance Program, and so I work closely with the district and with the parents and students. I'm also a former District Director of Athletics for the Kansas City Public Schools. And so when it comes to fiscal responsibility and knowing how to manage a budget and knowing what to look for, I think that gives me more qualifications. But more importantly, more to anything, I have a passion for students, I have a passion for young people and helping them lead and build successful lives. I'm young enough to have been in their shoes and remember what it was like. And so I'm deeply passionate, and I just love seeing the lightbulb moments when these young people kind of get it and they are able to come into their own.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right along to the next question. And with this, we will start with Torrance, and that is, do you have an agenda for your term? If so, could you sum it up in a couple of sentences?
Absolutely. For your term. Yeah, absolutely. As, you know, as I was deciding on running for school board and what I would like to accomplish, just from my personal experience in the nine years since I've moved into the Raytown District area, I can tell you that I think our best, biggest opportunity is improving our image in Raytown School District. There are so many accomplishments that this district has that needs to be celebrated and really getting to the point to where this is the place to go again. This is a place that, you know, you send your child and you can be proud of that education that they're getting. The work's there, the faculty's, hard work and efforts are there. But I can tell you that we should be proud of that. And that would be the biggest thing for me would be improving that image.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Michael, the same question, an agenda for your term, and you're on mute.
Yes, I think the agenda for my term is to champion the leadership that we have in the district, especially the administration and supporting Dr. Knox and her leadership team and their vision for what Raytown can be. I also want to champion and be a proponent for wraparound services. I know Ms. Douglas is very well versed in that area. And so I want to make sure that we are providing the support that our students need, not only in the classroom but outside. And again, being the Director of REIT, we get those students and families who need a little bit of assistance. And so to be able to partner with the district and help the district at a board level when it comes to those wraparound services from trauma-informed care to, you know, after-school snacks, just those things that other students, you know, have, and they're able to be successful because of it. Also, since I'm a former pro athlete, I think the activities and the athletics are so important because it helps to create a more well-rounded student and the discipline and the things taught through sports and through activities really excel. And it really helps to retain some of our students. A lot of students come to school for the fellowship with one another. And so to be able to champion those things would be another part of my agenda.
Thank you. Madeline?
One of my biggest agendas, I think I have a couple of, but I think my greatest passion is for connecting the community back with the school district. I am a faith-based community leader here in Raytown, and I have a knack for being able to connect people together. And I think some kind of way, we've lost a little bit of that community connection with the district. Parents have got to get back connected to what's going on with their children. I'd like to be a part of advocating to make sure that parents not only are connecting back to the school, but that the school has a viable way for them to be heard with the connection. I'd like to see the neighbors, and I'd like to see the church. I'd like to see businesses. I'd like to, it's like when we were kids, the whole community made sure that we stayed connected to school. We got in trouble, it was no playing hooky, and the community saw you running around here. They all got involved. I'd like to see that involvement begin to happen again and that we all find a way to sit down and everybody know it is important to everybody in the community that these kids make it and that these kids stop being suspended, stay in school, and whatever we can do to help, we got to commit and help.
Thank you. Sean, your agenda?
Yes, so something down a three-year term into ninety seconds is going to be very hard. But first, we need to make sure the community trusts in the board. So we have structured time and the board meeting for board members to talk about their experience in the district. And I plan to use that every single month. I plan to be in schools when they're in session so that I can see how this is working, so I can see how teachers are doing the curriculum, so that I can interact with different people and see what's really going on. And you might say, well, Sean, aren't you a teacher? How are you going to be able to do that? Well, my principal and my superintendent know how deeply convicted I am about this endeavor, and they completely believe that if they give me this opportunity, then I'm going to give it back to them tenfold. And I will, and they've been proven right in that already. I think family involvement is so important, and it's not just saying, hey, get your kids to school on time, and that's your involvement. It's maybe there's a casino night, maybe there's a kickball league, maybe there's something that we can do as a district to involve everybody and get everybody excited about this. We need to dignify the discipline system a little bit more so that kids, just that they feel like they belong. And I think the key to that is student leadership at all levels, K through twelve. Get them involved in different things, whether it's inside the classroom, inside the school, or in the community in general, because students that are busy and involved don't have any time to get in trouble.
Thank you. Rick?
My answer is no. I have no agenda. And I would actually leave it at that, but you said if we have short answers, you're just going to ask us more questions. But seriously, the answer is no. I have the support of the teachers right now because they know what I believe in. They've seen me in action, they know I support them, I support higher pay, I support our students, I support our new superintendent. But as a single school board member, you cannot come to this job with your own agenda. You can have things you want to do and things you believe in, but you're one of seven, and you have to work with six other people if you want to get things done. So it's important that you see everyone's viewpoint and work with all those people and work with the administration. It's something that is ongoing learning because I learn that all the time, that I can't always get my way all the time, even though I would like that, it'd be nicer. But you don't always get your way, and you have to learn to work with others who don't always agree with you on everything.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Jules, an agenda? Up, Sean, mute.
Sorry about that. I think our only agenda as a school board member should be to partner with our administrators and to build a bridge of support with the community. You know, I would like to see our PTO and our PTA systems back up and running and our parents engaged in the community. I think some things that are important is keeping the staff classified and certified that we currently have and that we are hiring all of the important positions that we have openings for, such as bus drivers and food service and substitutes and custodial because they keep the schools up and running. I don't think that they're not as important as the teachers or the administrators. I think they're equal. And we need to have a living wage for our teachers. I think that that's really important. But as Rick said, which I agree a hundred percent, if you've been on any board, you know that really it's not just about your agenda, it's about the agenda of doing what's right for our community and for the students in our school district. And really, that's what our only agenda should be, is making the right decisions and acting on them and doing what's right and good.
Thank you. Noddy? Your agenda?
I'm a fast learner, and I'm going to take Rick's words for what they were. I wouldn't necessarily say an agenda, but I would say things that I plan, that I want to see happen. I would love to see teachers get better wages and the things they need to help these kids thrive in the classroom. I'm a true believer of something that Ms. Madeline and Mike said. I want to see kids get this trauma-informed that they need, and I think that would help teachers get a better way of living. And it'd help the kids, on the other hand. I'm a strong component of seeing kids get the things that they need outside of the schools. Like, I don't think a kid can probably learn in the classroom, not knowing what they're going to eat when they go home at night. So I want to see kids get the wraparound services that they need. I want to see the teachers get what they need to help these kids learn in the classroom. And I also want to see us build a strong relationship with the community. And when I say community, I mean get the trust of the parents back, that we can help their kids. And also build the relationship that they can teach their kids at home as well. So those are the things that I really want to see happen, and I want to help with the board get these things done.
Thank you. We're coming right back to you, Noddy, with this random order. And this ties in with just what you said your agenda is, and what are your budget priorities?
My budget priorities are, first, like I said, address the teachers' salaries and also the structure. It was heartbreaking for us to go to that Barnes Forum and listen to those kids talk about, "It was raining outside," and it was raining in the building when they was doing a performance. It's also heartbreaking to know that it's kids that aren't getting fed properly and they're not getting proper nutrition. It's heartbreaking to see these teachers are not getting paid the proper wages. And we know they still have to pay back student loans, and they really aren't having a proper salary. And I feel like there's things that we have to adjust and make it work to where it's affordable, to where they have a decent life. And I know these are things that are hard because of the budget that we're under, the restrictions we're under. But those are the things that I feel like we have to address in order for us all to feel whole. And those are like things that I want to address when I do possibly get up on this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jules? Your budget priorities? And you're on mute.
I think that a good portion of our budget needs to be reviewed, look at our rentals and the rental properties that we have and the properties that we own, and just go through and see if there's, you know, a better way for certain line items that I've seen on there. That's not to say that they're not needed or necessary, but the fiscally responsible thing to do is to constantly be reviewing where we are spending money. I think that, as they have said, that, you know, getting our salaries to where they need to be is really important because you can't continue to have qualified teachers if other school districts are paying them way more. You know, they're going to continue to take our teachers. And we have got amazing teachers and amazing students that deserve amazing teachers. I would also say that one of the things that I would really like to look into is our attendance and how much our budget is affected by our attendance. I'd like to learn how we can, you know, take advantage of that money that is available to us through the state budget that we're not currently getting because of our attendance numbers. You know, enrollment is great, but attendance is just as important as enrollment because attendance is what gets us paid. Oh, I got to have the thing over here. And I'd say that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
Our number-one budget priority has always been and needs to remain that we just stay financially solvent, but more than solvent, financially strong. And one good thing about having new board members is it just gives us new voices. But we also, besides having a new superintendent, we have had some new administrators in the area of finance. And even though we've had great ones in the past, it's great that we have new ones because we're taking a new look at some of our different financial concerns. And one of those has been, we've received millions of dollars of COVID S R funds through the last couple of years, but we cannot continue to rely on those. So going forward, our budget priority has to be, how are we going to handle the budget the next couple of years without the use of those extra federal dollars that we've been getting? Our priority, even if we never gave teachers another raise, our priority is always staff pay. That takes eighty percent of the budget. But our priority is in finding ways to give our teachers and all of our staff raises that help them compete with inflation, which is hard to do right now, and compete with surrounding school districts. So that will always be a budget priority.
Thank you. Madeline?
I agree with Rick that our priority has always got to be making sure that our teachers are taken care of so that we can keep our teachers, keep good teachers and hire good teachers. But I also think that one of the great priorities has got to be in training. Looking at the changing demographics of Raytown, we've got a lot of behavior management stuff going on that's causing a lot of suspension, it causes problems with retention, and a lot of other things, discouragement, for one thing, to our teachers when they can't teach because of behaviors. And I think that that comes in with training. Some of these children, we're looking at the outside behavior that they are displaying inwardly. There's a lot going on. So we need to be trained in trauma-informed care, we need to be trained in behavior management. We've got to be, we've got to begin to spend even more money on making sure that that supportive side for the teachers will also be the thing that helps to keep teachers with us, that helps keep students in the district. Because when you can't keep a classroom in control, or you have to keep sending kids out, or there's constant chaos, there's something else going on underneath that we've got to look at. And I think training is at the bottom of a lot of that.
Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, teachers are the heart of everything, aren't they? I mean, imagine, just for a second, if you're not a teacher, imagine being in a small room with twenty, maybe thirty, depending on the district, students all at once, changing constantly. And, you know, if you can do that successfully, then you also have to teach them stuff, too. So, I mean, teachers are the most important part of this mechanism. And yeah, Rick, I mean, you said eighty percent, I know it's at least seventy percent. I know it's at least seventy percent of our overall budget, so we can't just say, give everyone a raise. But there are some things that I think we could do, like, uh, for instance, the district started Trauma Smart this year for the teachers, right? I'm fully certified in that program, by the way, and I think it took twelve hours to do a lot. Who are we paying to do that? Did we send our own staff out to be trained in training people in the Trauma Smart and then give them money for that? What about grant writers? Do we have a lot in the district? Let's double the amount and send our own staff for training on that so that we can save money by not sending the money outside of the district. Um, some important things for the budget are also our early education program. That's extremely brain based. If we have four-year-olds exposed to musical instruments, a different language, building things, it creates connections in the brain so that it's easier to learn academics like math and uh reading later. Um, and so I think those are some important things. I would also rely on the experienced board members who helped us get the Meritorious Budget Award in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Lawrence?
All right. Uh, well, obviously, I'd I'd like to echo what everybody else has said, that uh faculty would be the the budget priority um uh here. Uh, my budget priority definitely is faculty, but not only um the uh paying the teachers and the faculty uh what they deserve. Uh, because um, you know, even if we get to that point, uh, just throwing money at it, it's not gonna be uh what where we'll find success. They also need to feel supported. Um, you know, they need to feel that they're taken care of financially and also uh that they're uh supported by the other faculty members, the teachers are supported by the admin. Um, and all the other people on the front lines that uh that make our district uh such a great district. Um, so and they need to feel safe. You know, we've gone through so much uh trauma over the last few years uh that um, you know, we really need to show these people, these this faculty, teachers, admin, everybody, that we're behind them as parents and and as administrators that um that we support them. Um, and we're gonna be there for them through uh not only through financially, but also through uh, you know, what we do for our processes.
Thank you. Michael?
Um, yeah, I think what everyone is saying is is correct. I um, I wanna make sure I throw in um continued district improvement uh when it comes to structural things. Um, improving uh what we do have and looking at ways to uh update um our facilities, I think is so important. Uh, I also want to uh see more of the money put towards um our athletics and our activities. Um, I think when you have championship caliber coaches and and quality coaches, um and they directly impact the lives of our students and our student athletes, uh whether they're on the field or uh in a chess club or 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 what have you. Uh, I think it's important to invest um into those those uh opportunities for them. Um, and lastly, uh, of course, I will echo uh um what Rick said and what and what Nody said, what Sean said as well, and making sure that we're being um innovative in how we uh how we take care of our teachers who take care of our students. Uh, and that could be different things. It could be different um incentives uh to to help pay pay back our student loan or help um um recruit or retain the teachers that we do have in different kind of manners. Maybe it's scholarships for their classrooms um each semester or each year. So just did ways to do different things that, again, we are tapped out as far as eighty percent of our budget, but I think we could be creative in how we uh we look in those areas.
Thank you. Uh, next question, we'll start with Lawrence, and that is, who should make the decision decisions on what books and teaching materials should be banned?
Well, that's a good question. The um, you know, i- individually, I or in in just coming from a parent's uh perspective, I have an eight-year-old son. Um, you know, I know what I think is appropriate for him. Uh, and uh, but uh overall for a school system or for um, you know, the reading materials available. Um, I know we have processes in place that are very good. Um, I am concerned uh with the recent um uh talk about what books should be banned. I uh myself prefer to look at a book if somebody says it should be banned and I'll read it myself because if they don't want to, they don't want you to read it, then what's in there that they don't want you to know? Uh, um, books on a, you know, banning books is just um is not a very good uh um uh habit to get into. Uh, you know, of course, there's age-appropriate stuff, obviously. And like I said, I have an eight-year-old and I I like to think, you know, I I kind of censor things um a little bit, but I also know that uh, you know, I want him to learn. And the best way to learn is for him to go out and search that knowledge and to read, and I'm I'm proud to say that he he does that. He he looks for stuff, so um, I I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Rick? Who should make decisions on what books and teaching materials should be banned?
Well, first of all, when you say banned, it's you're you're using a term that we don't deal with here in Raytown. We don't ban books. And reason is we haven't needed to because we have a process. The process involves teachers, students, administrators, and parents. Parents should definitely be involved. Everyone should be involved. But it starts before you even bring in a curriculum or bring books in. What do you mean by ban? Just any book we don't allow? Well, there's lots of books we don't allow. That doesn't mean it's a banned book. You're talking about a book that we already have in the library and someone comes along and says that needs to be taken away or done away with. We we haven't had to deal with that here because we have a process. We trust our people. We trust our teachers, our staff, our parents, and our students to work through that process to know uh what should and should be in our curriculum and in our libraries.
Super. Thank you. Uh, Michael?
Um, I I agree uh with with what Rick said as far as um us not having to deal with that yet. And so from my stance, uh, I think it's important that we adhere to the processes that are already in place. Uh, and understand that we may have our personal belief systems. Uh, but ultimately, we have to um be the board members for every student in the district, and it's important to remember that. Um, I think when it comes to uh the curriculum that's in place, uh, we have to make sure that we are teaching with the times. And so we cannot be um so far uh removed from the reality that is going on. There is a common decency that I think uh is 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 adhered to within the district and our surrounding districts as well. Um, but I also think it's important that we be willing to listen um and that we be listening, be willing to uh try and understand if we are met with uh uh something that would normally not be something we would we would want to look at or have our our children discuss. I'm a parent of a fifth grader, and so I know they know so much stuff when they walk out of those schools. And so I think it's a, it's a, it's a relationship between the parent, the district, uh, the teachers and uh the students.
Thank you. Nody? Sean, you're on mute.
Yes, um, I ultimately hope we never have to come across this when we have to make a decision. But I think ultimately, it's a, it's a decision that's made amongst everyone. Um, the materials that that are picked or should be made amongst everyone. Um, I don't think that we will, and hopefully we don't. Um, I'm willing to listen and 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 hear it like, like they said, both sides of a ban is a strong word. Um, I hope that the materials that are in the library are appropriate for the children. Um, so I really don't have much to say about a ban or ban books in schools. Um, and hopefully it just never comes to a point where we are even approached with that situation. And if we are, I hope we all just are in our right state of mind to where we can make that decision amongst the people, what's best for the children. Right?
Thank you. Thank you. Sean?
Um, so I am not against a parent deciding that a certain book is not appropriate for their own kid. I was just telling Lorraine this in the chat. Um, but I kinda have a problem with a parent thinking that therefore no child should have access to that book. You know, I mean, um, we have curriculum and we have standardized assessments that teachers have to prepare kids for and teach kids. And given that they're doing that, then they have a lot of autonomy, and that's what makes our district great. Um, but the the end in mind that both sides of this argument uh say in common is that they don't want kids to be indoctrinated. Well, the definition in the dictionary of indoctrination is giving people a set amount of information from which they can uncritically make their conclusions. So let's say I walked into a library with ten million books and I read them all. What's the likelihood that one of those books is gonna have an impact on what I think about the world overall? It's whenever we say you cannot access this information that we're actually indoctrinating our kids. We need to give them access to everything because right now we don't teach kids what to think. We're preparing them for jobs that don't even exist yet. We teach kids how to find solutions to their problems and how to learn more information on their own. And we can't do that if we're saying you don't get to access this information.
Thank you. Thank you. Jules?
So um, I'm one of those parents that made my kids read a hundred classical books before they graduated high school. Um, so my opinion is that um we have policies, procedures, and protocols in place um as a district for this reason. Obviously, those policies, procedures, and protocols have worked thus far. And if there comes a problem where um something like this needs to come up, um, then we need to present it and we need to have our community commission, um group committee um get together and and we need to hear all of the voices from all of the different people. But ultimately, it's the people that are on the board that are, you know, going to be making that decision. Um, and I think that, like Rick said, we need to trust our people. Um, I will say that the most important thing for me when it come came to my children was not teaching them what to think, but teaching them how to think. And that's why I had them read hard books and on difficult subjects that were uncomfortable. But you know what? We talked through those uncomfortable and hard settings. Um, and so I wanted my children to have critical thinking skills. And um I think that that's the most important thing for our kids is that we're giving them and empowering them to be able to think for themselves and and that parents need to be a part of that process um and get involved and read those books with their kids.
Thank you. And Madeline?
Um, I'm I'm against the word banning in just about anything because I think when you start talking about banning things, you start talking about a lot of control over other people's choices, other people's minds. Uh, we're living in an information age and we're gonna have to come to the grips and the knowledge in our heads that we are living in the information age. You can ban a, you can ban a whole lot of books uh if you choose to do that. However, all you gotta do is go to Google and get it again. It's out there. It's on, it's in social media, has it? Uh, I think parents are gonna have to step up and be the ones who um in their own homes, talk to their own children about how uh, you know, age-appropriate stuff. I think teachers are gonna have to be the guides over the books that they that they are a part of our curriculum. That's why we have teachers to help guide the process that kids are not just learning stuff in a um, you know, a way that is not healthy for them. I don't believe that we should ban books. Uh, I just, I do believe that they should be age-appropriate. I don't think you should teach a twelfth grader some things that a kindergarten some things that a twelfth grader is learning at the time their mind isn't ready for yet. But I think we've got to be very proactive in our thinking. Uh, if you think you're gonna ban education, we're in the information age is here.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, our next question, we will start with Nody, and that is, is it realistic to expect parents to be more involved with schools and their students, knowing that both parents, if there are two in the home, may be working and dealing with the challenges of raising children, managing a home and a job?
Um, I think that's where we become innovative. Um, I was talking to a parent the other day and I heard that the high schools had ninety-five percent of parent participation when it came to um them going up there and um saying saying they're saying uh checking on their kids as far as their grades. Uh, so I feel like it's a way that we have to, as the teachers, reach out to the to the parents and and get this done. And that's the only way we're gonna be successful. Um, so I do feel like it is a way we can get this done. I don't know, I'm not, I know it's hard and I know it's complicated, but in order for us to be successful, this has to happen. And the only way that I see that this happening is us figuring it out. Uh, with social media and just like us doing this meeting right here on Zoom. Uh, whether it's a phone call, it it just has to happen, whether it's in person, a phone call, whether we have to go over to their homes. If we can send truant truant officers over to people's house, we can get a parent to to communicate. So it don't always have to be bad. We gotta get to the good and the positive before we always figure out a way to get to the negative. So if it's gonna make that child better, more successful, then I think it is possible.
Okay, thank you. Lawrence? How to get parents involved?
Yes, well, um, you know, that is something we need to do. Uh, we need to bring um the uh the engagement level of the parents in this district up. Uh, we need to bring the PTA back to uh where it was pre-pandemic uh levels. Um, you know, having that engagement from the parents will definitely show us um that return on investment uh through the children. Um, the, which brings up one of the things that the one of the jobs of the board is to build trust with the community, build trust with the parents and uh that trust that if they do invest that time and that effort uh into the community and to the kids, that they will see that return uh with the children, with their their, the child's investment or the child's engagement and the child's uh um growth uh will be um will be seen. Uh, and that's one of the things we just, we have to, we have to get the parents more engaged in this district.
Thank you. Sean? How to get busy parents involved?
Uh, yeah, so the busy parents is not an independent variable. We can't say, hey, poof, you need to be more involved, right? It's a dependent variable, and there are things that we can do to attract them. We need to make them want to be more involved. Um, so the, whenever we make a phone call to them, like positive phone calls should outnumber negative phone calls at least four to one, if not more, right? So that they wanna come back. I will totally echo Nody. There are so many digital ways to communicate with parents right now. Um, I follow all twenty-two uh educational institutions on social media, and they're sending out lots of information about involvement. But the thing is, how do we know when families get that information? I wish there was a way for us to track that. That would be a little bit better. And we should, there should be a way for us to track as well when a parent or a family member fits that criteria of being involved. And by the way, what are, do we have a shared definition of what involvement means? Like, is it quantifiable? Is it measurable? Because if it's quantifiable, then we can track it. Um, I happen to be a trainer of the Seven Habits of Highly Successful Families. Like, I get families together and they make a family mission statement. They decide what they want to do in the community. Uh, and so I think that I have a lot to bring uh to the table whenever it comes to family involvement.
Thank you. Uh, Jules?
So I think that a lot of our parents um say to what they've said to me is that they don't feel like they're smart enough to be involved in their kids' education or that they don't feel like the teachers feel like they're smart enough and that the teachers are the experts. Um, what I will say is this, I'm a mother of five. Um, I worked full-time and um what I decided to do to become more involved was I went back to college because I felt like, you know what, I'm gonna educate myself so that I am smart enough. And I am involved in my kids' lives and I work a lot of hours. And I was a single mom. I'm I'm not a single mom now, but um I was a single mom. So I know what that's like to be that single mom working and trying to balance everything. But ultimately, as the parent, um, we need to get our parents involved and and one of the ways of doing that is championing our parents and really telling them what what a great job they're doing and um supporting them in the things that they need, like a learning lounge that's specifically for parents or maybe parenting classes where we're getting people from our community involved in in helping them, where maybe they're Where we're getting people from our community involved in, in helping them, where maybe they're struggling or maybe they're having um, mental. Um, you know, issues themselves and, uh, mental illness, um, issues themselves. And so I just feel like. Championing them and really listening to what our parents want, it will, and then of course, doing events and stuff will help us.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. I think um, uh, parental involvement is indicative of how the teachers choose to communicate as well. I think it's important that they see each other as partners and not as anything. Um, you know, I'm in charge of educating your child and you listen to what I say about your child. Um, and I think that involves the, uh, also includes parents. Um, having the voice and the knowledge base to know what they should be looking for. What questions to ask. Uh, we have a, a lot of great um, community. Organizations like Power Parent Lab that trains parents on what to look for, how to be. Um, a stronger stakeholder in their child's education. Uh, so I think it's important not to alienate either side. Um, as a parent of a fifth grader and a parent of two graduates, you know, I've had to go to uh, to bat for my child and be that voice. Um, but I know how to do that. And so a lot of parents may not be uh, as equipped. And I think we can quote unquote punish parents for having to provide and take care of their, uh, their children. I think we have to be respectful, responsible with how we, we manage that. I think we have to be aware that it is something that we're going to have to face and how to tackle and again be innovative and outgoing. In our approach, our ways that we can do better uh, in, in killing that.
Thank you. Rick, busy parents?
So you asked if it's realistic to expect busy parents to uh, be more involved in their kids' education and decisions. Is it realistic? Yes, it is realistic. Is it easy? No, it's not easy. Do we need to find new ways of doing things? Yes, we do. Starting with the fact we need to show parents. In better ways, that the more involved they are with their kids' education, the more successful their kids will be. I'm not saying every parent needs to be a helicopter parent. But we need to express the importance of being involved in their kids' education. Uh, and we need to do different things and I need to do better about uh. Finding different ways to do things. But as a district, we have done things. We, we've tried to have parent-teacher conferences on different days, different times. That are more accessible to more parents. We've tried since one, there have been some positive things about COVID. And that's the prevalence of being able to do more meetings through Zoom and things like that. So a teacher can have a parent-teacher conference electronically now, or we didn't use to do that before. So there are ways that even busy parents can be involved. I think people have mentioned listening. Our new superintendent has done a great job with right out of the gate of listening to students and teachers and parents and listening sessions all across the district. And the more we listen to students and parents, the more they will want to be involved.
Thank you. And Madeline?
Um, I think that we have to also look at the fact that statistically, we don't have a whole lot of two-parent homes. A lot of homes just is single parents, one parent trying to do it all, whether that be in most cases it's a mother. Or whether that be a father. So I'm grateful for the digital age that we live in, that we are. Uh, find ways that we can digitally accommodate what they need or, or the time that they need, maybe different days. Uh, that they need. Also, I think we need to continue to look at the village approach. Uh, I have a sixth grader in the Raytown School District and her mom, which is my daughter, works at night. So we're both signed up as, as a grandparent and a parent for her needs. And when you don't get one, my, my granddaughter hates it. Because if you don't get her mama, you can certainly get her grandmother. And so I think we're gonna have to look at the village approach to that. And also we gonna have to think about advocacy training. Again, some parent, I think I heard Jewel say. Don't get involved because they are embarrassed at the fact of they don't understand everything. They don't know what this or that means. But I think we need to spend a little bit of time, little bit more effort. In parent advocacy to teach them that it is not as hard as they think it is to become involved, stay involved. But get, let's get this village involved. Let's get the village involved, especially with these single parents.
Thank you. We're gonna come back to you, Madeline, with this question. Uh, it kind of builds on what we've just been talking about. COVID seems to have affected our students and they lost some of the socialization. They would have learned by attending classes and simple peer pressure. How can the district provide social skills and mental health services for students that have issues at school or at home?
I think that the district needs to uh, look really strongly at the fact that a lot of what's happening behaviorally with their children. Happened during COVID, when they went through this non-social, you know, time of non-socialization. And look and see what affects that being by themselves or not having their teacher and not having their friends. Uh, the effect that it had on them and begin to have some socialization classes as a part of the curriculum of learning. You know, uh, it's not all about reading and writing. It is about how do I communicate? It is about how to have a friend. It is how to be friendly anymore and, and talk about. How to, to communicate what's going on inside of them. So I think that the district would do well to have some classes on socialization. And friend building and skill, uh, that as a skill, uh, recreational time. Uh, that builds friendships again and that builds socialization again, especially now in these changing times after COVID. So I think we can build that socialization into that learning game.
Thank you. Michael?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. COVID seems to have affected our students and they've lost some of the socialization they would have learned by attending classes. And simple peer pressure. How can the district provide social skills and mental health services? For students that have issues at home or at school?
Yeah, I think one of the uh, the things that I'm campaigning on is the need for uh, more wraparound services. That um, in, involve more intentional and individualized um, opportunities. Uh, one to, to identify that. So that means working with the parents to see uh, if they have seen things at home. Uh, and then being able to work with the teachers uh, as well in order to develop. If they is identified, develop a plan of action for uh, those students. I don't think it's an overarching thing. I think some kids we saw actually do well with uh, during the pandemic. Uh, and they did well at home. Other kids struggled and you kind of see it in their, in their scores and in their reclamation to. Uh, to being in class every day. And so I think it's important for the, from a district level. To be aware that those things could still be manifesting themselves right now, even though we're, you know, over halfway through this school year. They could still be manifesting themselves in different ways, possibly in the behavior, possibly in those outbursts. Uh, but then again, again, like, you know, you have new, new thought processes, you know? Thinking about a hybrid schedule or a hybrid system where those kids are allowed to be home and work from home. Uh, on days they just can't emotionally um, be in a classroom and not be afraid of that and being so demanding. And saying you have to be here, you have to be here. I know that's how we get our money in the district. But if they're online, if they're still able to contribute, I think that's another option.
Thank you. Uh, Nody?
Um, I think COVID, everyone knows it rocked our world. So I think um, in order for us to. Really deal with those kids that are having those social anxiety issues, we really need to get those, those kids the proper care that they need. Um, I think one way we can help it is the light, um, as Mandy kind of said a while back, it's, it's kind of like with prominent forming. All those kids need that. Uh, it, it didn't just affect the kids, it affected adults. We can see that when people started going back into society. Even just going back to like football games, people's manners and etiquette and everything was just horrible. Uh, so it just affected all of us as a whole. It didn't just affect children. I mean, just for them to get up and come to school. It was social, socialness was already bad due to just like giving a kid a phone through text messaging. Some kids couldn't even hold conversations no more. All conversations happened through text messaging. So when COVID hit, it just made it even worse. So we, we really need to like help our kids in, in so many different ways. Um, it like, like it's kind of over what Mr. Watson said, uh, this, if they need to, we, we need to teach our kids how to get back into environment. Get back into the school social system, period. So whatever it takes, we need to make sure we get innovative and figure that whole thing out. And I'm, 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 I'm totally with, we're trying to make the innovative ways and we still asking the teachers work harder and harder and harder to figure this thing out. That's why we have to take care of the teachers because they have so many obstacles to climb. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Uh, yeah, so I think uh, kids need to feel safe. I think they need to have empathy. Uh, so just like Michael was saying, if they don't have the food or the services they need, then they don't feel safe and they're not gonna be able to learn. And if they're not able to learn, they're gonna do something else to occupy their time. The same is true though, when somebody doesn't feel safe emotionally, right? I think it was uh, over two-thirds of students said that students who are uh, LGBTQIA. Uh, are treated unfairly and eighty-four percent uh, due to race ethnicity. So uh. People are treated unfairly according to students and they need to feel safe if they're gonna learn. And if, if they, if they can't learn, then they're gonna be behind academically and you know what students are gonna do then. Um, so building empathy, I mean, we need to have community circles on a regular basis, not just restorative. Uh, conversations when things happen, but community circles. We need to have group celebrations among students. We need to have an abundance mentality like, hey, I can learn this and I can do well at this and I can get a hundred percent. And so can you. It's not a contest all of the time. Um, we need to have SEP counselors all over the place. And we need to fix all the missed learning that students didn't get when, uh, during the pandemic. And unfortunately, like Rick said, our SR three funds are running out. But that doesn't mean that we can't still do tutoring early in the school year before it gets too late. Lots of services we can do to fix this uh, lost socialization from pandemic.
Thank you. Torrance?
Yeah, um, this uh, this needs to be a priority for us, um, just focusing on this issue uh, more. We had uh, there were socialization issues before COVID. Um, and uh, whatever different pressures that was, that, that caused that. Uh, once COVID came in, um, that just made it exponentially worse. Uh, so we definitely do need to focus on this. We do need to prioritize it. Um, children, uh, you need that uh, that interaction with uh, their peers. Uh, you know, that, that's one of the things I know I echo one of uh, one of the panels with the previously uh, said. That it's not just about that reading and writing. It's also about um, your social interaction. Uh, it benefits us all when we learn how to work with each other. Um, and in these early stages with the children, it definitely benefits them to learn to work with their peers. Um, you know, I know uh, when I ask my son how his day went or um, I'm talking to his teachers. Uh, I definitely, one of my first questions is how's he interacting with the other children? Um, cause I wanna know that he's getting those skills down because that's gonna benefit him as much as um, any other skills that he learns in, in class, definitely.
Thank you. Jill?
So I, I believe that IQ is um, important. But I think that EQ or emotional quotient is really even more important. Um, we can teach kids and educate them, but we also have to um, help them to become good citizens and good people. Um, and that is part of that emotional quotient. I think that what the pandemic did is it um, really put a, a laser focus. For some parents on their kids' terrible behavior and they maybe never really realized. Um, how their children were acting in the classroom. But boy, when they had to be the one parent um, teaching them at home. They really kind of got an idea of that. I think that um, our kids need to understand emotional quotient and the importance of it and what it means. Um, and teaching them that is just as important as teaching them the other portion of education. Because you can be really smart but be a really big jerk, you know? So we wanna teach them empathy and sympathy and um, serving the community. Because some, you know, when we're serving other people, it helps us to get over ourselves and maybe our situations. Um, I also think that um, helping students understand socioeconomics and neurodivergent. Um, I think a lot of our kids, um, parents, we didn't realize that we, our children were neurodivergent until we got back and they were at home with us. During the pandemic. And so I think that's something else that needs to be id- identified, um, but especially the emotional quotient.
Thank you. And Rick?
So the bad news is anything regarding COVID or anything that came out of COVID, there's no easy answers to. The good news is almost everything that people have listed in the previous answers, we're already doing. Uh, we oftentimes just need to do more of them and be better at them, but we're already doing them. And like I said in one of our previous forums, I put our education up against any district. Well, in this case, I'd put our, our social services that we provide students up against any district. Uh, we, we have, have counselors, but we need more. We have interventionists, but we need more. And it's something that's always uh, they discuss on a regular basis by the board of how we can get more help to more students. There's been mention of suspensions. Uh, but suspensions don't tell, number, numbers of suspensions don't tell the whole story. We have to have discipline. But our goal is to keep kids in school. If they're not in school, they're not gonna learn. So that is our goal and that's something the board that deals with on a regular basis. Uh, so I do believe that uh, we're doing a great job of this area, but there's always room for improvement and we can do more. And we will need to uh, uh, work on ways that we can do more with less funds when, when those federal dollars are not available like they have been.
Thank you. We are just about out of time and I don't have a good yes or no question. It, none, none of these school issues are that simple, I'm, I'm afraid. Um, so I wanna thank you all for your participation. Um, we're going to go now to uh, your final remarks, your two-minute remarks. And this will be an opportunity for you to ask people to vote for you and explain how you compare and contrast. You all sound fabulous. And if I were in Raytown, I would wanna expand that board so you all could be on it. Um, but if we could start and we'll go in alphabetical order again, and Sean, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you so much. So hopefully everyone realizes that I'm very well qualified for this position. So I'm the only candidate that's endorsed by MOE, which is the Missouri Equity Educational Partnership. I have a master's in education. I'm finished with my coursework for my doctor of ed, uh, doctor of education. Which means I have plenty of time right now to uh, dedicate to this role. Um, and I'm kind of a math guy who can take numbers like discipline numbers that are seemingly irrelevant and really paint a nice picture with them. Um, but I'm also amazing at maximizing a team's effectiveness. I'm a record-breaking fundraiser as a former co-chair of Batesville, Kansas City. Um, and I've helped several student teams find success from student council to green club to math team. And let's make no mistake about it, the school board is a team. And it will not be effective unless we can work together as a team. In fact, individually, like Rick said, we are useless as, as individuals. Um, so how am I gonna fit on the school board? And now I'm gonna mention some other names of current board members. Uh, Alonso Burton is the president and he founded a student leadership development uh, program. I'm a leader and me coach. So combined, we're gonna maximize student leadership because kids that are involved are not gonna get in trouble. Board member Natalie Johnson Berry has just about, if not more, education, experience and awards in English as I do in math. So we're gonna be a powerhouse uh, whenever it comes to academics. And you could say goodbye to being in the bottom ten percent academically in the state. Uh, Bobby Salisbury, she has so many community connections and I do community events. So we're gonna maximize family and parent involvement. And Michael Watson, even though he hasn't been elected to the board yet, he has all of those community resources and that energy that I think this board needs. I am a seven habits of highly effective uh, people trainer. So I can help get the best out of everybody on the board and then together we'll get the best out of every student, teacher. And individual in this community. Success is not a ladder because it can only hold one person. Success is the world's biggest elevator and it fits the whole district. So jump on board. My name's Sean Bryant.
Thank you. Madeline? Oh, Sean mute? Can you start over? And you're still on mute? I know there are monsters in computers. I don't know about what all these IT people say, but they're monsters. And there's one on your computer. Do you wanna wrestle with that, Madeline? I can come back to you.
Okay, so can you hear me?
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I want everybody to know that I've been very intentional. In looking into talking to teachers, currently talking to teachers, administrators and students in the Raytown District. I'm really trying to find out what the successes are. And I'm finding out more and more, there are a lot of successes already going on in the Raytown School District as well as challenges. And so I'm one that don't. as well as challenges. And so I'm one that don't want to recreate the wheel. If if it ain't broke, don't start trying to fix it. That takes too much energy. But I am really working to see what or uh not only the uh challenges, but the successes to help build on and the challenges to see if we as a team can uh move further in uh conquering those challenges. I feel like I'm very qualified. I've worked with uh children at Niles Home for Children who are children who are having all kind of mental uh and challenges, all kind of behavioral challenges. And I saw those kids uh saw us work with those kids and saw them become great graduates. They have become great adults, many of them. Over the years, I've seen great success. I don't think there is any child that could, has to be wasted. Not that any of us think that there are children to be wasted, but I think that it is worth our efforts. It is worth our time to put in all that we can. I think I'll be a wonderful candidate here in the Raytown, Missouri. I'm a grandmother of of two Raytown students that I am highly involved in their education. Here, I think I'm, I hold a doctor's degree. I I know many of you don't know that. I hold a doctor's degree in education and in counseling. I teach crisis counseling, one and two. And so I think that uh if I come on board, I will have a lot that I can offer to this community. I love the Raytown community. I live out here in this community and I look forward to working with everybody on this team.
Thank you. Terrence, your closing remarks, please?
Well, it absolutely amazes me uh the qualification of the people on this panel. Um and I feel very relieved, uh you know, having a a child in this school district uh um that uh uh I think his education is gonna be well taken care of uh from here moving on through the future. Uh and that's the thing, he's he's eight. He's in second grade, so we've got a while still in this district. Um uh and really um you know, I can tell you that uh I didn't find a lot of uh success in education in the, in my early years. I sort of fell through the cracks and it wasn't till later in life that um I really uh saw education as that uh that path and that tool to success. And uh it was only a few years ago that I got uh my bachelor's degrees. Um you know, I went back to school and and got them and uh you know, and I've been um working uh to uh gain more education. I'm I'm currently studying to sit for my CPA exam. Um so I know that it's possible for children to fall through the cracks and I know how easy that is. And um you know, just having that one uh faculty member, that one teacher that maybe uh connects with a child uh can make all the world a difference. Um we need to attract that uh those, those really good teachers and keep them, you know, that recruitment and retention is so important. And that's what I have a a lot of experience in. Um and I can definitely help out there as a as a candidate, but um can tell you, I'm a hundred percent uh invested in this and seeing uh this district um uh get better and continue to do well. Uh because I have, I have my son in this uh district, so um but like I said, uh this is a great field of candidates and we really, I don't think, can lose April fourth.
Thank you. Uh Rick, your closing remarks, please?
Yes, thank you again for having this forum. Uh I I believe uh I would be good uh fit to continue for one more term on the board uh for the the role I played and for the experience. I think it's important that we uh maintain some experience on the board and I want to continue to work with our new superintendent and our new administration to keep moving our district forward. And uh as I say that, I think one of the things that's mentioned is we need to do a better job of champion being a champion of our district and telling our our good things. Uh I didn't have time to say it the last time, but I wanted, wanted to say that, you know, people it it's very easy for people to be negative and they'll sit behind a computer and say, well, things just aren't the way they used to be. Well, no, nothing is the way it used to be. And even though I'm a longtime graduate, long ago graduated Raytown, things are different. And even though I think I got a good education, I know I did. My my kids who are recent graduates, I think they got a better education. They got a better, more well-rounded education. They're they're more successful at this point in their lives than than I was. Uh my two youngest kids found their spouses at their high schools, at Raytown High School, at Raytown South High School. That's kind of a big deal. So they they made friends, they got a great education, they were part of the community. And I think that's something that we need to continue. We need to continue touting and make sure that our our district is a destination district that we will see people want to come here and then our enrollment will increase. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Nodi, your closing remarks, please?
Hey, first of all, I want to say thank you guys for having us here tonight to be a part of this forum. I think it's important for people to know what we what we do and me saying that, you know, I've worked for the family court and I've been there twenty-three years and all of that. But at the end of the day, people don't care about how much, you know, they want to know about how much you care. And I'm very passionate about what I do and I'm very passionate about this whole community. I've been in this right town community for over twenty years. I got three kids that graduated twenty oh eight, twenty ten and twenty eleven. Um I I've lost three kids in this community due to homicide. I had two kids that was on my caseload. That was, that was the reason due to that. So I'm passionate about what I'm doing. I'm trying to save lives. I'm not out here to to just do this. I'm here to champion for this community, champion for these kids and these teachers. I know the trauma that they're going through. I know what they need and I know what I talk to. I'm not a stranger in this community. I've been a part of this community. I've coached many, many kids, hundreds of kids. And I know like we've let good people get out of this community and and guys that are like successful. Like George Good that's coaching at Barstow and Mike and Mike Olson that's coaching at Central that that are good educators. Uh and we lost a lot of good people. Uh we we had a championship team that just was at Raytown High School Girls Team. Those are, those are kids that need to be celebrated. We got kids that's doing great things. We got teachers that's doing great things out here. I want to celebrate the good things and piggyback off of that to make this thing better. That's what I'm here for, to advocate for those things to make them better. I think the school board is doing great. Uh and I think that we can help Dr. Knox, uh Alonso Burton and all of those people do much better. And that's what I'm here for. I don't want to keep talking about, you know, what we do. I want to talk about what we ought to want to do. And that's what I want to piggyback on to make this thing better. So I thank you guys for having us tonight. I appreciate it and I wish all you guys good luck and 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 a good campaign. I thank you guys and I wish you guys great luck and God bless all you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. And Jules, your closing remarks, please?
So one of the reasons that I decided to run for the school board was because I had spoken to Dr. Knox and I felt like she was just such a visionary. And I can feel the passion and the love and the care that she has for our community. And for that reason, um and additionally, because I spoke to our principals and our students and our parents. And doing that and and speaking to the teachers and the admin, all it did was make me fall even more in love with our community, which I already love so very much. Um and what I foresaw was that we needed someone on the board that was well-rounded, that maybe has business and finance and education. Um and I felt like that for that reason that I would be a very good fit um for our community. Um as well as the fact that I'm an advocate and I'm a champion of ideas. I know I'm one person on the board, but I'm someone who um is innovative. If if you ask anyone um to describe me, I think that they would describe me as being tenacious and innovative and um loving and kind. And I want to see that our kids get the credit that they deserve, that our district gets the credit that it deserves, that we have an entire public relations campaign just to tout all of the things about our amazing kids that we have in this community and our amazing teachers. And um turn around that reputation um back to what it was in the good old days, as they say. Um because we still have those good old days right now. We have some amazing people on this board and in our community and in our kids and their parents. And I feel like I am someone who can kind of bring people together and we can hear all the sides and um maybe work to really build something great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Michael, your closing remarks, please?
You know, it was a a a disadvantage as a kid when you had the W in your last name, you had to be at the end of the line. But you know what? I love it tonight, though. But I like to, I like to thank the uh League of Women Voters. I like to thank uh all the people who watch. I've been getting a lot of Facebook messages and and direct messages. And so I appreciate um the passion. I appreciate the willingness to take out your all-time as well as the candidates. I mean, what a time to be alive, what a time to be in Raytown. Uh I'm I'm excited. Like, I'm literally excited about uh our leadership and Dr. Knox. I'm excited about uh what the board has already done. Whenever you're able to come through something like COVID uh and you're said to keep tracking and 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 stronger, you know how resilient you are, you know what you're made up of, and you're gonna be made up of something that's gonna win. Uh and I like to echo what uh one of the members, one of the candidates said. I mean, it you, you're in great hands with with this group of candidates. I think for me, it's uh it's important that um continue to be involved in the community like I have been the last ten plus years and then six years at REAP, um being uh the go-to for the district and being a partner with the district. Uh for me, it's it's a seamless transition. Um you know, I'm I'm still uh involved in the schools and and want to be able to 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 go inside the schools more, be able to talk and and be a, be a listener, be a, be a helpmeet, be a connector. Uh utilize my networks that I have to uh to make our district better because it's only gonna be better for my son, but for my grandson. You know, I'm I'm a I'm a pawpaw now. And so, you know, for me, it's important that we're setting up uh for the, for the next generation uh to be in better, in a better position. I I love what Rick says and and how I would, I would put the Raytown Education up against um any of our our counterparts and any of our uh more suburban districts. Uh because I know how how well-educated my my children are coming through the district. So April fourth, get out and vote. Uh and more importantly, vote for me.
Thank you. Thank you. You all have been fabulous and um I can see that the Raytown schools are gonna be in good hands. I just wish that there was room for all of you. It, you've all been remarkable and it's been a great learning experience for me and I hope I trust the same for your constituents, the voters of Raytown. So, yeah, and I want to echo what uh uh Michael said, you know, get out and vote on April fourth. That's so important. We all have a alderman's uh forum next week, so we hope you will tune into that and then take advantage of uh both of these forums that will be on the League of Women Voters website. I'm gonna turn it over now to Anitra Steele, our uh forums chair. Maybe I am. There she is.
Yes. Thank you, candidates. It's been very uh inspiring to see so many good people uh taking on a hard job. Thank you, audience, for your thought-provoking questions and your interest in the April fourth election. A recording of this forum will be available on the League's website, L W V K C dot org. Please take a moment to share our candidate forums via your Facebook page next door and other favorite social media channels. And remember to com- for complete voting and candidate information, visit L W V K C dot org and vote four one one dot org. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.